Okay, welcome to the Glendale City Council Meeting of March 9th. Please, let's have a roll call.
Council members, Draymond?
Here.
Friedman? She is here, she just stepped in the back for the record. Najarian?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Quintero?
Here. The flag salute will be led by Councilmember Weaver and the invocation by the Reverend Rich Gardner. Please rock.
Please join with me in our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. O creating God who showers us with blessings and plants within us the seeds of compassion and grace, we invite you to open our eyes to the need around us, whether it be in the home of our neighbor, the classroom, the workplace, the grocery store, or anywhere else in our community, so that we may devise a response that will heal wounds, encourage hope, and provide care. Challenge us to understand that our community overleaps the boundaries of this city, this county, this state, this nation. Help us attend to those who suffer and grieve, who are anxious and angry in such far-off places as Haiti, Chile, and Nigeria. May we admit that these men and women are our brothers and sisters, their children our children, their elder ones our mothers and fathers, in this great family which encompasses all humanity. We lift our voices and hearts in prayer because we sense the holy in our midst, the sacred one who calls forth sacrifice even from us. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Clark, now we have the report.
The agenda for the March 9th, 2010 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, March 4th, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next, please.
Next, in your presentation and appointments, at 3A is the agenda preview for the meetings of March 16th, 2010.
Mr. Starbury?
Yes, I go to Bob McFall, Assistant City Manager for the report. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, on March 16th, first, there will be no specific reports on the Housing Authority or the Redevelopment Agency. There will, however, at 2:30 be a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council, the Redevelopment Agency, and the Housing Authority, and that will be to hear a report from the Director of Community Development and Housing regarding the proposed Doran Gardens affordable home ownership development project located, proposed to be located at 331-334 West Doran Street. There will also be a joint meeting of the City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, which there will be two public hearings. The first will be a report from the Director of Community Development and Housing, this will be regarding the proposed legendary tower Glendale mixed-use live-work development to be located 300 North Central. The second public hearing will be from the Directors of Community Planning and of the Community Redevelopment and Housing Departments. This is regarding the proposed advertising signage overlay zone for the Americana brand and the Galleria. That evening at 6 o'clock will be the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, which there are a number of items. First, the City Manager with a report regarding the establishment of a 24-hour city access phone number. Next, the Director of Human Resources with a report regarding the LiveScan fingerprinting system. Next, the General Manager of Water and Power will have a report regarding two demand-response pilot programs with North American partners to enter into appropriate contracts with SCAPA, the Southern California Public Power Authority. Next, the General Manager of Water and Power with a request for additional appropriation of funds for the Bloomberg LP News and Data Service System. This will be followed with a report from the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power with a request for approval of a contract change order to provide funding for the smart grid project management and development of a strategic smart grid roadmap. And then lastly, the Director of Information Services with a report on the plan for the Google application and campaign. That will be it for next week.
Thank you, Ms. McFall. Next, please.
At 3B is a proclamation designating March 11th, 2010, as World Kidney Day.
Okay, it's my pleasure. Please come to the podium. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the Renal Support Network, RSN, and other organizations nationwide are recognizing World Kidney Day on Thursday, March 11th, 2010, to improve awareness and prevention of this disease, an estimated 26 million Americans, or one in eight adults, are at risk for developing chronic kidney disease. Early detection can help prevent the progression of kidney disease that can lead to kidney failure. The two main causes of kidney failure are diabetes and high blood pressure. By calling attention to the importance of education about chronic kidney disease within our city, we hope to improve the quality and availability of such information and services. Improving the quality of care and services, education, advocacy, and awareness of kidney disease represents a worthy commitment to current and future residents impacted with this disease. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim March 11th as World Kidney Day.
Thank you. I'd just like everybody to know that, you know, a lot of times kidneys aren't very...
Where did you say your name?
Oh, my name is Lori Hartwell, and I live in Glendale, California. I'm a very proud resident of Glendale. And I'd just like everybody to know that, you know, people take your kidneys for granted. And my kidneys failed when they were two due to bacteria. The two number-one causes are high blood pressure and diabetes. And when you have high blood pressure, you don't know it until it's too late. I have a lot of friends who've ended up in emergency rooms with complete kidney failure, and it was because their blood pressure was too high. So, you know, I just want everybody to realize this is a serious problem, and to take care of your kidneys, your blood pressure, diabetes if you have any signs of it, you know, stay healthy. We have a lot of beautiful places in Glendale to walk and stay fit. But again, the kidneys are the master chemists of the body, and they do so much. They regulate hormones, they regulate fluid, and you just want everybody to take care of them. So, it's World Kidney Day, and think about your kidneys.
Well, and before Mr. Draymond presents the proclamation, let me just say a few things about Lori Hartwell, who, as you can see, is a, not a big person, but she certainly has a big personality and a lot of perseverance. I mean, she's done things scientifically, she has worked with some of the best scientists in North America, she has lobbied on Capitol Hill as well as Sacramento. She is an advocate for people who suffer from this disease in all aspects. And in addition to that, what she does every year, that's just a tremendous event, she puts together a senior prom for teenagers who basically having to undergo dialysis, et cetera, and she does it all by herself with the assistance of her husband. And anyway, they're just a great couple, they're great people to know, and I just, you know, thank you, just do just a wonderful job, Lori, you're someone that everyone should look up to, that's for sure.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say, if anybody has been diagnosed with kidney disease, Renal Support Network is available, our website's rsnhope.org, or our number's 818-543-0896, and we can help you, you know, figure out what's going on and get you navigated to the right place, because you can live a long life even though you're diagnosed with kidney disease.
Lori, it's my pleasure to present this to you-
Thank you.
...on behalf of the mayor, and it's my pleasure to shake your hand again this year-
Thank you.
...because kidney disease and end-stage renal disease have figured prominently in my family. My father was, ultimately died as a result of complications from end-stage renal disease, but lived a long, long time, both on dialysis and prior to that, with diminishing kidney function. And due to organizations like the one you've created, and the awareness that your organization raises, that quality of life has increased. And so I'm greatly honored to be able to present this to you on behalf of the mayor and the council. Very pleased again, as I say, to shake your hand and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Next, please.
At 3C, we have a presentation of Ms. Christina Lopez, Junior Troop Leader for Girl Scouts Number 23, or 231.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to introduce to you the Glendale Troop 231. They all go to Ardy White Elementary School, so if they can have their own introduction.
Oh, absolutely. Have them come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Pellegrini, and I am a fifth grader at Ardy White Elementary We are both, as you know, Troop 23, and my favorite cookie is a cinnamon.
All right, gonna make some sales while you're here. Well, all of you, all of you come up to the podium. Everybody stand up and come up. That's it, just walk up. But why don't you tell us, rather than pitching your favorite cookies for sale, tell us what, tell us your name, and then tell us what you like to do, what kind of...
Mr. Mayor, I'm guilty for that. I was asking them what their favorite Girl Scout cookies were before the council meeting started. I couldn't help it, sorry.
Buy all the, you can buy all the cookies, Mr. Clark. All right, give us your name and what you like to do, or what's your favorite subject in school, whatever you want to say.
Hello, my name is Erica Lopez, and I'm from Troop 23, and I go to Ardy White Elementary. And I'm in fourth grade, and my favorite subject in school is math.
All right.
And my least favorite subject is science. And my teacher's Mr. Gosford, and my favorite animal is pandas. And when I grow up, I want to be a park ranger or a zeppelot keeper.
Oh, very good, very good.
Thank you.
Next, come on, come to the podium. On somebody's got to go next.
Hello, my name is Eliana Marley Escobar, and I am third grade, and my favorite subject is math. I don't really have a subject that I don't like. I really like to do everything in school.
Very good.
And my favorite sport is soccer.
Very good. Okay, next.
Hello, my name is Nora DeHartunian, and I go to Richard and D. Ardy White Elementary, and I'm a third grader, and my favorite subject is science and math.
Very good.
Hello, my, my name is Natalia Lopez, and my favorite subject in school is math, and I'm in second grade.
Hello, my name is Genevieve Sergio. I'm in second grade, and I go to Ardy White Elementary School. My favorite sport is soccer, and I'm really glad to be here.
Thank you, thank you.
My name is Chloe Pellegrini, and I am a Girl Scout. My school is Ardy White Elementary School, and I'm in third grade. My teacher is Mrs. Dom, and I love to be here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah. My school is Ardy White. I am a Girl Scout. My troop is Troop 23, and I'm glad to be here.
Very good. Thank you all very much for coming. Actually, I'll have, I'll have Ms. Friedman, who's gonna give you some little buttons that you can put on your...
None of the students liked English the most, they liked math. Very interesting. Like to read as much, calculate, be young and young.
There's actually a brother in the audience. Why don't you come to the podium and give us your name? Who's here suffering with, who ever was history?
Hello, my name is Gala Lopez. And I'm not a Girl Scout, but I am a Boy Scout in Troop 106 with my brother, and if I, if I didn't have my brother in Boy Scouts, I wouldn't be in Boy Scouts, that's why, that's why I'm here right now. And if I didn't have my mom or my dad here, then I wouldn't be here with you, talking to you right now, face to face, so...
Well, good, congratulations.
I go to Ardy White, and my, well, my favorite, well, my favorite thing is, I think, math.
All right, very good, nice to meet you. It was a pleasure, it was a pleasure to meet all of you, and we're very happy that you came tonight, and I hope you can come back whenever you want. Whenever you get your homework done, you know where to come on Tuesday nights.
And thanks for the cookies.
And thank you for the cookies.
Buy your Girl Scout cookies.
Buy your Girl Scout cookies, everyone.
Yeah, that's exactly right, it's that time of the, I guess it's that time of the year, so let's buy Girl Scout cookies there. They seem to be fairly healthy, at least the ones I got.
Thank you for having me.
All right, next, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, at 3D is a nomination assignment for the Civil Service Commission. This is for Councilmember Weaver to make.
Suckin', I'd like you to advertise for this opening.
We will. And at 3 is a nomination assignment for the Civil Service Commission, and this is for your nomination, Mayor Quintero.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, please.
At number four is City Council, City Council and Staff Commenters.
Mr. City Council and Staff Commenters. Ms. Friedman?
Thank you. I've been gone for a few weeks, some of you might have noticed, so if you'll indulge me just for a moment, I'll just give you a brief recap of where I was. I was in Washington, DC twice. I went on Monday and came back on Thursday both times, so I was able to be here over the weekend. The first trip was for the Association of California Water Agencies. I went on behalf of Glendale in terms of our seat for the Metropolitan Water District, and at that meeting, we met with a lot of our California congressional representatives, and it also gave me a chance to meet with other directors from other water agencies. I think that dealing with Glendale's supply of safe and reliable drinking water is a very important task, and I feel very honored to be able to be a part of that. So it was a very productive meeting, and I'm sure you'll be hearing more about water as we move towards the November election and some of the ballot initiatives that deal with water that are going to be on that ballot. And then the second trip I went on was with a few members of our staff, Rayidi from the Police Department and a member from City Manager's Office, as well as Mayor Quintero. And we had a very productive round of meetings over two days, and because there were so many meetings, we're gonna kind of tag-team between us, so I'll tell you about a few, and he's gonna tell you about a few. The basic reason that we were there was because it's appropriation season in Washington. So what's happening is that representatives from cities all around the country are going to talk to their representatives and other representatives in Washington to try to secure for localities different earmarks and different sources of funding, particularly for some of the larger projects that we're interested in. Things like reclaimed water systems, transportation, improving railroad crossings, making them safer, a whole number of projects that some of you might have heard this council discuss about three weeks ago. We had a very successful group of meetings, and we met with the DC Officer of Governor Schwarzenegger, with Officers of Henry Waxman, with the Office of Wastewater Management, with the US Bureau of Reclamation. And in that meeting and the one before, both dealt with infrastructure for reclaimed water systems, which I know is of interest to a lot of people in Glendale, as to our stormwater, recycling water, all kinds of things, with the Federal Railroad Administration, particularly talking in upgrading our at-grade crossings so that we can have safer railroad crossings in Glendale. And I'm gonna turn it over to the mayor to talk about the rest of, some of the other meetings.
Okay, we met with two, with our two senators, with the Chief of Staff for Senator Feinstein, and with one of the legislative assistants for Senator Boxer. And what we did a few months ago was actually put on the agenda and come up with a list of eight to 10 projects that we thought deserved funding. And so with the two senators are more interested in regional type of projects, we worked on the bridge over the, over the freeway to...
Griffith Park.
Griffith Park, yeah, coming out of our, out of our LA River project. We also worked on waste energy, on the DNA project that is currently funded, but we'd like to try to expand it. And I think we received positive inclinations from the staff that they were interested in pursuing it. Then we also met with FEMA, and what we were particularly interested there was flood insurance, some of the hazard mitigations and so forth, and we're dealing with right now. And that was a very, very productive meeting with the FEMA staff, and as a result of that, we'll be contacting our western region, which is up in Oakland, Region 9, but they were very receptive to our ideas and so forth. And then we also met with our congressman, with Adam Schiff, and got some real, got down to some details there, including some of these projects are ideal job creation projects, so I think they're something that hopefully we'll be a part of, and just generally went over all of the fiscal 2011 appropriations. And I think that was it. It was incredibly cold.
It was not that cold.
She was born in New York, what can I tell you? But anyway, I was also there for an airport conference, so I went back and forth between the, the two meetings. And the airport conferences, I mean, once again, we're working on trying to bring some nighttime noise relief to the Burbank residents, and in addition to that, working on what we call a regional intermodal transportation center, where everything will be consolidated in one location at Bob Hope Airport. So that's it. Mr. Najarian or Mr. Draymond?
Yes.
Mr. Draymond?
Sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Najarian, you're first.
Couple items. I'm also traveling to Washington, DC for next week. I'll be missing the Tuesday meeting, so why do we have so much stuff when I'm gone? Is this a way to push things through and...
Opportunity.
I mean, one of those items requires four votes, if I'm not mistaken, is that a wise... Take a look at it. Okay. Oh, it's only introductions, not a vote, okay. The next item is related to my comment from last week, where Steve Zurn indicated we got several new B-line buses. And my request is that we look into the possibility of donating our used out-of-service B-line buses to our sister city, Gapah. They're in deep need of transit infrastructure and transit capital, so if there's any way that we can release those or determine some sort of process, I know we've done it before with different sister cities, if we could start that process, I'd love to look into that. The last item, and Mr. Quintero, I need your help. We were sitting down with a gentleman the other day, Friday night, who was complaining about the paving that was done at his, do you remember the name of the street?
Oak and Gate and Celito Drive.
And I guess it was a slurry seal that had been performed, and they, apparently it's cracking up, and it'd be great if we could find out whether the contractor did an adequate job in his work, and if there's a warranty at all, that'd be great to hold him to that. Thank you.
Mr. Draymond?
Two quick things, Mr. Mayor, and not to take this to a low level, so I'll try to find a nice way to... I had a contact from representatives of the Montrose Shopping Park Association about the installation of, what is the right termination? Let's see. Well, they're the doggie bag receptacles that have been placed throughout the shopping park, wonderful thing that the city did, but if there are no bags in the doggie bag receptacles, I guess you understand what happens. And they have informed me that they're happy to refill them if somebody can let them know what kind of doggie bags go in the official Glendale doggie bag receptacles.
Dispensers.
Dispensers.
This is where you pull the bag.
Yes, yes. This is where you used to pull the bag, but now it's just like an empty Kleenex box, you see, so on a post, so. So anyway, I'm not sure whether that's you, Mr. Zurn, or someone in Parks or...
Actually, I'll say, Steve, that seems, doggie bags seem to be under the Parks Department, not Public Works, so we're sending email as we speak.
Okay, thank you. So from the ridiculous to the sublime, or hopefully more sublime, but I think this is in your ballpark, Mr. Zurn. And I hope the Clemmons are looking in at this point, because it's, it's an issue they've been talking to me about since before the 2007 election, and it's something that is going on up in the Emerald Isle area, and I've been promising to try to get some relief. I have so far been unsuccessful in getting them relief up in that area, and it has to do with the speeding that's going on up there, particularly near Kirkham and Flint Ridge in that area. And so I finally went up there and stood there during the critical hours, which are obviously morning and then, you know, evening rush, so to speak. It's, I've never seen anything like it anywhere. And of course, we've gone up, we put some stop signs there, which, it's like they don't exist. So I would like to know if we can place a camera up there, just to, just to document it. It's not, it's, it's, it's not even a California stop, they're not even rolling stops, this is no one stopping at all, it's just blowing the stop signs every minute, and it's unbelievable. And somebody's gonna get killed up there, there's just, I mean, I know that this kind of thing we hear about in a variety of neighborhoods in the city, we've all seen it and tried to do something about it, but this is just, I've never seen anything like this. So, anyway, if there's something we can do, and if you can, at least through memo, let us know.
Together, Mr. Draymond with the PD as well, sounds like it's a good place for an enforcement.
Yeah, it's not the kind of thing that, it's not the kind of thing that, you know, parking a patrol car up there for a week is gonna take care of, this is...
No, but maybe some video and some follow-up letters with, because we, they also show the license plate, so. Or maybe something there.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
One other thing I forgot that might be of interest to some people, due to the hard work of the staff, and I thank them for really going above and beyond, the farmer's market on brand now accepts food stamps. So it's something that I think is of interest to a lot of people in the community, and if it's, if you can't use them, you might know someone that can. So if you know someone who uses food stamps and wants to get access to the fresh fruits and vegetables at the farmer's market, please let them know that now they take food stamps. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any staff comments? Okay, next, please.
Item five is consent, items are following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed. We have items 5A through E.
Okay, I don't have any cards.
We will require one abstention, I believe, on the minutes from Councilmember Friedman.
To have one abstention, move the minutes up, I mean, move the consent counter at five.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Next would be oral communications.
Okay, this is the first half of oral communications, basically announcements. Start with Chaplain Al Garcelazzo, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members and City Staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Chaplain Al Garcelazzo. I live and work in Glendale, and am also a member of the Glendale Religious Leaders Association- I live and work in Glendale and am also a member of the Glendale Religious Leaders Association. But that's not why I'm here. I'm a member of the Glendale Mayor's Prayer Breakfast Committee. Forgot why I was here. And first of all, I wanted to clear up a misconception. Some people are under the impression that the Glendale Mayor's Prayer Breakfast Committee is a 501(c)(3)C, that is, a nonprofit organization. We are not a nonprofit organization. I repeat, the Glendale Mayor's Prayer Breakfast Committee is not a nonprofit organization. The committee was formed to plan and organize the prayer breakfast, and that's our only role and function, and that's something that we enjoy doing. But we're not a nonprofit organization. Having said that, I did want to remind you that the prayer breakfast will take place this Thursday at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. Doors will open at 6:00 a.m. Breakfast will be served at 6:30, and the program will begin at 7:00 in the morning. And our keynote speaker will be Ron Say, former third baseman of the Los Angeles Dodgers. So you're all invited, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Mayer, followed by Ron Farina.
Evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council, staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Library and the Friends of the Glendale Library. I'm chairman of the Authors, Artists and Friends series for the Friends of the Library. We have three events, Armenian events, coming up. One's next week. I think I mentioned it the last time I was here. It concerns a study made by a famous professor who'll be here from overseas to talk about life in Armenia in the years just before the genocide. Then we're having another event on March 25th. I think that's on the 14th, but check with the library or join the Friends so you can get all these dates straight. March 24th, Ravaged America, Silent 1919 Film. And you have to see this if you have any deep interest in what happened during the genocide. A young girl escaped from the genocide. She became an actress, and she's the actress in this film, Silent...Ravaged America, Silent 1919 Film. Also, on the 31st, we're having another famous person, an archaeologist from the Mideast, Gregory Arechian, and he will talk about archaeological discoveries in Armenia. And that's a treat for anybody interested in the field of archaeology. Now, on April 7th, the Friends are very pleased to bring you Tom Hayden. Now, who hasn't heard of Tom Hayden? His book is The Long Sixties, From 1960 to Barack Obama. Tom Hayden has recently been a state senator, an assemblyman, and he, in the sixties, he was married to Jane Fonda. And we had Jane Fonda here about four or five years ago, and that was a very, very interesting program. But this one is frankly deeper and more expansive, because Tom Hayden was not only involved in civil rights in the South, civil rights generally, the animal rights revolution, so to speak, or animal rights awareness. He also was, of course, an anti-war activist. And that was in the sixties. Then he became the assemblyman, the senator, and he's a writer. And he wrote a book called The Long Sixties, From 1960 to Barack Obama. And he will be here on April 7th at the Central Library to talk about his book and to answer questions from anybody who has questions. I'm sure there'll be some questions. Now, I have...I'll leave these...I left flyers last week, but there's some...
[bell]
And we also, very quickly, if I could have 15 seconds for our event in May, because it's another famous individual, it'll be Father Greg Boyle, Tattoos on the Heart, The Power of Boundless Compassion. And he's the Catholic priest who has been recognized throughout the country for his work with founding homeboys in the field of gang intervention and gang prevention. That is, May 10th, Monday, Father Boyle. And I have flyers for everybody here. And if anybody wants any flyers, wave to me, and I'll be quietly going back through the chambers. Thank you very much.
Ron Farina, followed by Kathy Kentsinger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and city staff. I'm here this evening on behalf of the American Red Cross Glendale Crescent Valley Chapter to invite the entire community to our upcoming Super CPR Saturday. It's this coming Saturday, March 13th. There's going to be two classes, one at 8:00 in the morning, one at 1:00. Only $10, greatly reduced price, but it's a great opportunity, if you haven't had this training before, to take advantage of it. We'll have classes at the American Red Cross, at the Glendale Memorial Hospital, and also at the Glendale Fire Department Headquarters. So we'll have three different locations. Call our office or go to our website, www.arcglendale to register, and we'll get you a seat. This is a great training opportunity, because it provides training not only in CPR, but it also teaches you what to do with choking and choking emergency. It also helps if there's a breathing emergency, and breathing emergencies can happen to infants and children and adults. So you will learn those kinds of skills. Choking can happen to not only your best friend, someone you know. It can happen to yourself, and you'll learn what to do if you're by yourself. This is an important training, because CPR, even with our wonderful emergency medical services in the city, seconds count. And getting someone to...providing needed oxygen to their brain can prevent this irreversible brain damage that will occur in about four to six minutes. So again, take the training. It's a lot of fun. People are relaxed, they have a good time, they learn the skills, they come away feeling more confident about their ability to help someone. And it'll probably be somebody you know in an emergency like this, someone that's a friend, not a stranger. So take it in case you ever need it. I've been coming empty-handed the last couple of visits, so I thought I'd bring a special Red Cross t-shirt. Got one for every city council member and the city manager. It says, "American Red Cross, Together We Can Save a Life." I ironed this one myself, so I'm going to give this one to Artie, because he's always helped me out with my audiovisual needs. And the rest, I'll leave here for distribution. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Farina. Thank you very much. Kathy Kentsinger.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm just here to wet your whistle about an event coming up. I'm the Vice President of the Glendale Democratic Club, and Ms. Friedman has agreed to monitor a candidate form that we are going to be having on March 18th over at the Pacific Center. And it's going to be regarding the people running for the 43rd Assembly District. It'll be from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And you're all welcome to come, and we'll have flyers next week. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the first half of oral communications. Next, please.
Next on the agenda at 7:00 a.m. is Director of Community Planning regarding summary of changes contained in the ordinance regulating exposure to secondhand tobacco smoke. At 7:01 a.m. is ordinance amending Sections 8.52.020 through 8.52.230 and 1.20.010D, and adding Section 8.52.240 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the smoking in public places and in common areas, balconies and patios of multi-unit rental housing and residential condominium complexes, and amending Section 14.2 of Volume 7 of the Glendale Building and Safety Code 2008 relating to posting the location of smoking prohibited units in multi-unit rental housing. This was offered on February 23, 2010 by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Starburg.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you had quite a discussion on the implications of this ordinance, your meeting of February 23rd. And as the staff report points out, gave staff direction in a number of areas. The ordinance is now back before you. For adoption, staffs available to answer any questions.
All right. Mr. Howard.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, briefly, there is also an errata sheet that you...that has been handed out. That errata sheet is in yellow highlight. There have been some minor changes to the ordinance since the redraft that was presented to you in your packet. That's what is contained in these errata sheets. I would suggest that, should the council find the ordinance and the minor changes outlined in the errata sheets acceptable, you would move the adoption of the ordinance, including the changes outlined in the errata sheets.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, I have to say, I find the change of the word cab stand to taxi cab stand just be outrageous, and I'm not sure I can support this on that ground. I also noted that on some of the citations of the points of law and the codes, it's...the decimal points have been shifted from here to there. So that's a very shifty thing, I think. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other comments?
Do we have cards?
I do. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll go to the public. Jay Rando, followed by Bruce Grant.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Jay Rando. I live on Stocker Street, and I noticed that a couple of people are very concerned about this ordinance and how it's going to affect the quality of life. And I just want to say that I am so behind that. Emphysema and asthma, going to go down. I mean, I can't believe that you guys would pass a law that could actually affect people having their emphysema and asthma cut short. Heart attacks and strokes, yeah, those massive grabbing of the chest things with this kind of ordinance, going to make them go down. Quality of life goes down for those. And what about lung cancer? Let's not forget that lovely thing about lung cancer and people who smoke. You know, they won't be able to cough up that lung when they're about to expire, and you won't get to see your neighbor die. I mean, it's just...this is a terrible ordinance to even think of something like this. Now, why is this...all kidding aside, why is this such a good law? Well, like, we have seatbelt laws now. We don't let people get in their cars without buckling their seatbelts. We don't allow people to get in their car and, well, supposedly not drink. We don't allow people to skeet shoot off their balconies. All of these things, all of these little laws that we put in really are for the benefit of a whole bunch of people, not just one small person. Some people have said that, you know, in some way, this is a constitutional right that they have to smoke. Well, it really isn't, because it actually harms people around them. People do choose to smoke, and this is one law that'll probably help them stop. Enforcement, a lot of...there've been people out there that are saying, "How are you going to enforce something like this?" Well, enforcement, a lot of times, when any law's passed, comes after the law is passed. Takes a little time to gear up to enforce it. In the meantime, people get educated, and a lot more people will quit smoking with these kind of laws. We haven't seen anything better than restricting where people can smoke to make them think about quitting. A lot of people say they want to quit, and they never do, but when they find that there's less and less places they can smoke, they actually start to quit. So this is one law that I have to say that you guys need to pass, and it's probably one of the better ones that I've seen. Councilman Weaver, good job. Did a great job suggesting something like this. Thank you.
Bruce Grant, followed by Elizabeth Gibson.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my name is Bruce Grant. I live in Glendale for the past 20 years. I think this law is a good idea, but the only thing I'm wondering, and I think it's been about a year ago, that the City Council passed the law, no smoking in public. And I haven't seen a whole lot of improvement. In fact, it seems like a lot of these mom-and-pop coffee sandwich places, small places, real close to...one on Brand Boulevard near where I live, the people sit right outside the door smoking. And I've gone up to them and said, "Yeah, do you know there's no smoking in public in Glendale? Who are you? What are you, the police? Why don't you go away?" So if we pass a law that's going to be no smoking in apartments in the common areas and on the patios, what I'm wondering is how we plan, or how you plan, to enforce this law? I mean, we don't seem to be doing a real good job right now with the no sm...I see people smoking in parks. Who enforces this law? Do the police? We have special undercover agents that go around and cite people? And I really can see a giant problem trying to enforce this. I live in a condominium, so I'm just wondering how this is going to work? Who is going to enforce it, and how are they going to do it? They going to write citations?
Okay, well, we'll...
I think it's...
If you're asking a question, we'll answer the questions when oral communications...
Oh, great. Okay, because I'll be eager to hear that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Gibson, followed by Esther Schiller.
Okay, you can hear me? Hello, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Gibson. I live in La Crescenta, and it's about a mile away from the Glendale border. I want to say I'm in support of this ordinance, and I've noticed a difference...I do want to say I've noticed a difference when the outdoor ban for smoking, including dining areas, was enacted about a year ago. I did notice a difference in the Montrose Shopping Center. The coffee...there was actually a article in the newspaper, in the local newspaper, that some people were actually being cited. And I've noticed that people don't smoke, and you don't have to hold your breath when you walk into the store. And people with asthma, you know, they don't have to just hope that they're not going to get an asthma attack. So thank you for doing this, and I thank you for taking the initiative to protect the community in general, especially the children, who are going to be growing up in families who live in multi-unit housing. I've also noticed less smoking...well, less secondhand smoke on Montrose, in the Montrose Shopping Center in general. So I just want to say thank you, and I want to support this issue.
Thank you. Esther Schiller, followed by Laurie Collins.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Esther Schiller. I'm Director of Safe Smoke Free for Everyone. Thank you so much for strengthening the fresh air ordinance. I'd like to share some information with you this evening about the Calabasas Housing Ordinance. The Calabasas City Council did something very interesting, which perhaps you might consider when this issue comes back to you. The Calabasas Housing Ordinance requires that landlords not only notify tenants about the requirements of the housing law, but also request that tenants, in turn, inform landlords whether they wish their unit to be considered a smoking permitted or a non-smoking unit. The tenant is informed in the landlord's letter that if they do not respond, their unit will be considered a non-smoking unit. Once the tenants respond or not, it's easier for the landlord to create a map or chart of where the smoking and the non-smoking units are located. Also, Calabasas does require that 80% of units adjacent to each other become non-smoking over time. The city allowed four years for this to happen, but they just about reached that objective in one year. However, the city ordinance does not require anyone to move in order to achieve the non-smoking section. Now, it's true with this arrangement that a smoking permitted unit might end up in the middle of the non-smoking section, but if smoke is drifting from that unit, their ordinance, like your ordinance, allows the non-smoker who's being affected to take some kind of legal action. Or the tenant who's being affected could move to a unit in the non-smoking section away from the person who's smoking. It sounds awkward and difficult, but it actually isn't. What is needed is simply a requirement that the landlord must enable the person who smokes or the person who doesn't smoke to move to the appropriate section with no increase in rent and no additional charges, except for damage to the unit that's being vacated. We have a special project, the Smoke Free Apartment House Registry. It's on the internet. We list the vacancies of landlords who've made their buildings non-smoking. We have a website. We provide information to landlords about how to create non-smoking sections or how to make their buildings totally non-smoking. Most landlords will do this over time as people move out and new tenants move in. It can also work that way in a city ordinance, that the non-smoking section is required to be developed over time as people move out and people move in. We have non-smoking lease addendums on our website, which can be used by our landlords, and we provide other information as well. It should be a requirement that the landlord issue a lease that has the non-smoking provisions in it. So the development of non-smoking sections is not that difficult. It just takes time. Non-smoking sections and non-smoking buildings are very much needed by the elderly, by people with children, people with chronic illnesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie Collins.
Good evening. My name's Laurie Collins, and thank you so much for strengthening the ordinance. I agree with all the changes that are made. I hope that you can work with the apartment owners that...and maybe implement some of the... intervention, but unfortunately, the apartment owners don't have that. So, again, I encourage you, and not wait a year, please, maybe within the next few months, you can start to address the apartments, it'd be great. Thank you so much.
Okay, the final card, Ahad Panadisian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, staff, and all the audience. I am very pleased to take part in this meeting and say thank you, all of you, for taking care for this issue, passing this law. The team worked hard with members of the Glendale Neighborhood Division and with the members of the city council. Again, all of you were determined to make these changes happen. Thank you again, it is important issue for me. Thank you, and I hope this law will be soon in effect. Thank you.
Okay, that's the final card. One of, well, before we do, Mr. Weaver. But one of the speakers, Mr. Grant, was talking about, well, enforcement in general, but outdoor cafes, can someone address that issue as to outdoor cafes?
I'm going to ask Sam Engel to come and answer that question. He has a whole plan.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, over the course of the last year, we've issued over 50 citations. Of all those 50 citations that have been issued either by police and neighborhood services, only two have been dismissed by the judges across the street, indicating that they are supportive of your efforts to make Glendale's air fresh for everybody and breathable for everybody. The problem that we've had with issuing those citations, and why 50 seems relatively few for the first year, when you compare us to Burbank, who issued 800 in their first year, is that we very strategically placed education as a requirement first, because we knew that this would be a change in our community. That changes tonight, assuming you adopt the ordinance, and that requirement for a warning to be issued prior to a citation is removed, and it allows either a police officer or a code enforcement officer to be able to issue a citation when they observe something like Mr. Grant observed in the cafes that he sees. Part of the problem that we've had is that there is a requirement, and I say it's a problem, it's one that we knew that we would have going into it, because we wanted to be able to tell people right up front, just like Mr. Grant did, "Hey, you may not know that you can't smoke here." Now, after a year of education and banners all over the place and signs all over the place, we'll be able to issue citations fairly quickly whenever those things come up, and word does spread. Thank you.
Ms. Trangle, I have a question. So just to be clear, a small cafe with three tables and 12 chairs, there's, on the sidewalk, there's no smoking in that?
With three tables and 12 chairs, there would be no smoking there. If they had four tables, they could set, if they met certain distance requirements, they could set aside 25%.
Right, so one of the tables, if there were four tables, and one of the tables placed at a certain distance, you could smoke.
Right.
Mr. Weaver.
Trangle, I'm sitting in front of Portos, eating outside, or I don't know how many at one time sit, 30 or so outside. If you're smoking, you're walking down the sidewalk, are you supposed to extinguish your cigarette when you get within, what, is it 20, 25 feet? Or can you just walk right through, smoking? I know it's fine line, but I've seen people walking by smoking, and I didn't know what our law was.
Yeah, Councilman Weaver, members of the city council, I smile because one of the things that you as a council have done, and we as a staff have suggested you, is we've kind of threaded a needle to try and make something work in a community like ours. Every time you would get within 20 feet of an open door, in theory, you would have to put out your cigarette. One of the things that we're working on, as long as you're continuing to move and you're not stopping so that you're interfering with those kind of things, that's the education that Mr. Kozas has come into the police officers on, when he's done watch briefings, and that's what we've given to the code enforcement officers. So as long as they're moving up and down, we don't expect them to put their cigarette out.
I just want that out to the public, because a lot of times we see people with cigarettes on sidewalks, and that's legal. They can go near restaurants as long as they keep moving.
Right, and the intent is to be reasonable, and not to have that stationary source of secondhand smoke.
Thank you.
And Ms. Trangle, as long as we're on the general subject, how about parks? What is the law as it pertains to city parks?
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, all public places, all publicly accessible places, parks, plazas, they're all smoke-free, it doesn't matter what you've done, actually, what most cities have now done, is made all parks smoke-free. The one thing that significantly changed between when we adopted the ordinance and two months after you adopted the ordinance, is that the park rangers had their law enforcement authority taken away from them, and that was part of the key strategy that was adopted when the city council adopted this. It put the burden on enforcement in our parks, back on police and on the code enforcement staff, and so that's who's doing that at this point.
I do have one other question. Last weekend I was down at the Americana, I saw a sign posted that said, "This is a smoke-free facility, except," this is what I want you to check, "except on outdoor patios." And I think Frida, Meechies, and Kayvitsa, and it said outdoor patios, well, those are the only places in there to have outdoor patios. I don't know how they call it smoke-free, and then talk about, in the outdoor patios that you can, you need the separation. I may have read it wrong, you just might want to check it and make sure.
Sure, we'll look into it, but in telling with, and working with the staff of the Americana, it was their intent that unless you were in those designated, that if you look at the Americana, there's a lot of public open space there that's accessible. It was their intent to have those areas be smoke-free. However, there are certain, much like Mr. or Mayor Quintero's question, if a restaurant could have on their patio and meet that the 25% of their seating capacity to be designated as a designated smoking area, they've made an allowance for that.
Yeah, I just didn't see how they could do it, that's why I'm just asking you to check it out.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, and just to be very clear, it's not just one quarter of your tables can be smoking, there are some, you have to, you have to, yeah, it's not just the space, either, or there are other options like permanent barriers and things like that. So it's not just you have, you know, four tables, one of them you can smoke at. It has to be a significant distance away, and that space, that distance was based on the, actually, the Sacramento study, I believe, Stanford study, excuse me, Stanford study and the University of Maryland study.
Yes.
And as to, you know, how that smoke, outdoor smoke dissipates, and so it's not just simply, I just wanted to make it clear, because it's coming across that way. The other question I get a lot is, because we say there's no smoking in publicly, basically public space, so the question becomes about sidewalks, and I think you've answered that. So if you're walking down the street, are you allowed to smoke? Walking down the sidewalk, you're allowed to smoke. Well, the sidewalks are public, and you're within 20 feet of front doors. So I hope people heard that answer as well, that as long as you're a moving target.
If you're moving, actually, you're not a target.
Yes, there you go. A moving non-target.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions?
I have a general statement. It was asked about how you're going to enforce it. Well, we have laws against speeding, we have laws against littering, we have laws about being in the carpool lane, we have so many laws around, and every day we watch people break the laws. You're just like this, you're not going to catch every violator of the smoking, but having the in place allows for us to target those people, and over time, it'll improve. I remember when they put their seatbelts in, took time, but finally, everybody, just about everybody wears a seatbelt without even thinking about it. So it takes time, but the fees, what, is $100 for the first, 200 for the second, 500 for the third?
Fractions, yes, within a year.
Within a year, so we'll see what happens over time. I'm not totally satisfied with this, as I stated when it came through, a lot bigger improvements from the first year, but we still haven't touched the apartments, and I feel for the apartment dwellers, because the number of emails I've got from people who have smokers living right next to them, and they have all kinds of health issues that affect them or their children, and we're not doing anything about that inside the units. About another year from now, maybe we'll do something about that, too, but it is a big step forward, so we'll keep plugging along. I think there is a way to regulate smoking, non-smoking in apartments, not condos, just apartments. With that, if you'd like a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, in a minute. Ms. Friedman?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the public, the public who came here tonight, certainly, but also all members of the public for their engagement, because this is something that only is succeeding because it's a true community effort. So I want to thank everyone in Glendale who's either had patience with us or worked along with us to make this a reality, because this is not at all about protecting people from themselves, this is about protecting people from what other people do. So hopefully, we found the middle ground that still allows for people to smoke if they want to smoke, but to do so in a way that doesn't affect other people. I would support at some point, looking again, and hopefully sooner rather than later, at apartments, and particularly at Ms. Schiller's, I hope I got your name right, recommendation about looking at the ordinance in Calabasas, so I would like to ask staff to take a look at that at some point. I do think we need to start looking at, thank you, looking at apartments, and at least setting aside with some buildings of, you know, whatever size, ways of having no smoking sections, so we can look at what's being done in other cities, but I just really wanted to thank the public, because this is because of your efforts, more than council, and so hopefully, we can all move forward with this and have a healthier city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Drayman.
Okay, I want to, Sam, if you would indulge us one more moment here. Sometimes when council members speak, we engage in some generalizations, and I just want to make sure that the public isn't thinking that we have not done anything with apartments, that is simply untrue. We've done a great deal with apartments, and that was the very first time we took a crack at this ordinance, and we've tightened it up even more since then. What we haven't dealt with is the realignment of smoking versus non-smoking units within an apartment complex, and that's what my colleagues are speaking about right now. As I understand it, if I understand what we have done correctly, Mr. Engel, you can't, well, let me just, let me just run down the checklist. You live in an apartment house, can you smoke in a plaza?
No.
Can you smoke in the hallways?
No.
Can you smoke on your balcony?
Today, yes, 30 days from now, no.
Yeah, I mean, with this new legislation, the answer is no.
The answer would be no.
Correct. How about out by the pool yard?
No.
Right, so common areas, and your balconies, and hallways, so on, but inside your unit, you can smoke.
Yes, you may.
And right now, we're not reshuffling, and you, and as an owner of that building, or your agent, say a manager, if I want to go live there, you have to let me know where the smoking units are, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
So I just don't want the public to walk away with the idea that we've done nothing with apartments. We have, so, and condos.
And just, I want to also just clarify that I'd be interested in hearing about that ordinance. I don't know what the Calabasas ordinance entails, so I'm not saying I would support something, not support it, but I do think at some point, we can talk about it.
Thanks.
Just so that I'm clear, I also, my understanding is the direction that we got from city council two weeks ago, is you actually went one step further, and that is to encourage staff to voluntarily engage the apartment owners to begin consideration of the separation of units, and so that we can start to, as they're renting, we head towards that voluntary compliance. So I, we actually, while that's not in the ordinance, that was the direction we received from city council two weeks ago.
Mr. Mayor, that's right what you said, and you thought maybe over time, it would take care of itself, to a large extent. That's what you said.
My understanding from the owners that we spoke to, and it was not every owner in town, it was certainly a cross-section, and that we're probably heading that way.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make clear, I said inside the unit, and any smoker, smoking inside the unit only, smoke is still going up through the walls, out windows, and up to the units, and we have not addressed that by forming a mandatory kind of a separation. That's what I said I hope we come back to in the future, because I believe you can do it, but we've gone a long way. I agree, Mr. Drayman, patios, all the public open spaces, yeah, big move, big move, and we're being looked at by other cities for our ordinances. We'll have a new one to give them in 30 days, hopefully.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Mr. Weaver.
I have to move 7A1.
The changes outlined in the errata sheets?
Right.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes, next, please.
Under action items, at 8A is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding amendment of existing agreement for the operation and related engineering services for the Glendale Operable Unit, GOU, and for the operation and maintenance of two chromium-6 removal demonstration facilities for the additional three-year term. At 8A1 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute annual amendments with CDM Constructors, Inc., extending the currently existing agreement for the operation and related engineering services for the Glendale Operable Unit for up to three years. At 8A2 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute annual amendment with CDM Constructors, Inc., extending the currently existing agreement for the operation and maintenance chromium-6 removal demonstration facilities, for a total not to exceed $250,000 plus a reserve for contingencies in the amount of 50%.
Mr. Starburn.
Yes, I'll go to Mr. Steiger for the staff report.
Mayor Quintero, members of the Glendale City Council, I would like to ask our Assistant General Manager of Water Services, Peter Cavounas, to give an overview of this agenda item and the next agenda item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Peter Cavounas, Assistant General Manager for Water Services. The item in front of you, Item 8A, and the two associated motions are to authorize the city manager to enter into contracts with Camp Dresser McKee, known as CDM. The two items are for the contract operation of Item 8A1 is for the operable unit, the treatment plant, the treats are contaminated groundwater, and A2 is for the operation of the chromium removal demonstration facilities. If council has any questions?
Any questions? Like a motion, Najarian?
Peter, what is the, I mean, just as an overview, for many people who haven't been following this issue, we have detected presence of hexavalent chromium in our groundwater as a result of dumping, and was used as a rust preventative of some nature for industrial usage, dumped on the ground, entered the water supply, and we are the leading entity, are we not, in the efforts to remove chromium from drinking water? And that was in conjunction with the University of Denver or University of Colorado?
Utah and a number of other agencies, yes, you're correct, Mr. Najarian. City of Glendale has taken the lead nationwide to develop technologies for removing chromium-6 from potable water supplies, and that's what, this step that we're entering into now is actually operating full-scale treatment facilities that will showcase two different technologies for removing chromium.
And for all those chemistry students out there, the general method that we're removing the chromium is how?
One technology is using a resin, it's called a weak base anion, and that technology will absorb the chromium onto the resin, the resin subsequently gets washed, and the chromium gets taken out through that process. The other process is the reduction, coagulation, filtration, by which chromium-6 is reduced to chromium-3, and removed, and removed as chromium-3.
So we're proceeding with both of these methods concurrently?
Yes, and we're testing to see which one will be more beneficial to construct. One will have higher capital costs, the other higher operating costs, that's usually the trade-off among different technologies. We're hoping to develop the cost data that will lead us, as well as many other water agencies in the state, to good conclusions about chromium removal.
Can this process be patented?
That's a good question, I doubt it. The chromium removal has happened, chromium-6 has been removed in small quantities in other places. The challenge for us is how to remove it in large quantities, so it's not- So it's not necessarily that the removal mechanism is new, it's how do you make it work in larger quantities? So, and we, as a public agency, certainly don't look at it that way. We're looking at it as a contribution to everyone.
Well, it's like the Mercedes crumple zones, that it was a patent that they never enforced. But I think it's, if, you know, since we're leading, the leading edge of this, I certainly would not want you or your department to lose any of the recognition that may flow from being the first municipality to perform a large-scale cleaning. So don't be so modest as you are currently. So toot our horn, and especially if, well, especially if it works. If it doesn't work, we can, you know, keep trying. But if it is successful, let's really, I think this is really groundbreaking, an effort that goes above and beyond what any city water department is usually called upon to do. So I'm very happy with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Starburt. Mayor, Peter, can you mention quickly how this is going to be paid for?
All the money for this, actually, the research to date is all being paid for by grants that we've received, both from federal government, as well as from the state, Proposition 50, along with contributions from the Glendale Respondents Group, a group of polluters, along with the American Waterworks Association Research Foundation, Association California Water Agencies. The city has led a broad effort to collect funds, and it's, very little of the money has come out of the city's coffers.
I want to point out that there's another area where Peter and his staff have been very effective, is gaining grants and the support of the EPA to put pressure on the polluters to pay for the operating costs.
And let's once again point out that the pollution took place over many, many years, literally starting probably in 1910, 1915, with the age of aviation. So as a result, all of the aviation companies, metal companies, plating companies, everyone along San Fernando Road, literally starting up with Rockodyne at the very high end of the San Fernando Valley, all the way to downtown Los Angeles. There's a giant plume, it's called, a giant plume of polluted waters that are now having to be cleaned and recycled, et cetera. So, okay, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Move 8A1 and 2.
Roll call.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Council members. Freeman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next.
At AP is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding preparation of an electronic operations manual, EOM, for both the potable and recycled water systems and each of their major facilities. At B1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with CDM Constructors, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $400,000 plus 10 percent in contingencies.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't want to repeat what's in the report that you have received. The concept that we're presenting you with, in this case, is the creation of an operations manual for the water utility, both the potable, as well as the recycled water systems. It's addressing the issue of institutional knowledge and how to capture it. It's taking everything we know about our plants and our facilities, and putting it all in one place, and making it easy for everybody that works here today, or will work for you in your water utility in the future, and making it easy for them to find. So the idea is to consolidate all our plans, our specifications, our drawings, our vendors' manuals, our operational knowledge of the system, including photographs of the system, safety characteristics, and operational characteristics of both potable and water systems into one place, a digital place, and make it available to employees, and continue to add to it as we continue to gain knowledge on the system we operate.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, move 8B1.
Second. Roll call.
Council members. Freeman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please.
At C is City Attorney regarding discussion of city involvement in the opposition to the proposed 710 Tunnel Alternative Assessment Project. At C1 is a motion directing staff.
Mr. Starburt.
Mr. Mayor, let me turn to Scott Howard, City Attorney, for the report here. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Starburt. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item is before you tonight to allow, give the council an opportunity to discuss and debate and provide direction to staff as to the depth and level of involvement in the opposition to the proposed 710 Tunnel Project. That's the gap closure by way of tunnel. I've noted in the staff report some of the activities that South Pasadena has taken. And again, should, had I literally taken all of the material that I received from both South Pasadena and Lockingdown Flintridge, this report would have been probably 1,000 pages. I have two folders, actually, here at my side, containing documents that provided to me by Lockingdown Flintridge. I've had conversations with the City Attorney of South Pasadena, and indicated, just in really summary fashion, some of the actions that have been taken in the history, the history of the issues involving these proposed 710 gap closure. At this point in time, the City of South Pasadena, their latest resolution that they have adopted continues to vigorously oppose any surface connection to 710. They took a neutral position on what they call a route-neutral boring alternative. However, I was informed at the, after their, during their council meeting last week, on March 3rd, that they will be preparing another resolution to come back before the city council. As in their earlier resolution, which I've attached as an exhibit, they reserved the right to take final action on whether to support or oppose a tunnel boring project once they review the integrity of the information provided. As my report indicates, a draft geotechnical study has now been provided, and they have, the City of South Pasadena has reviewed that, and has issued their comments. And the comments are not precisely positive relative to the data and the interpretation of that data within that report. The City of Lockingdown Flintridge, although they have not adopted a formal resolution, have taken a position both by way of their public comments, as well as their litigation stance against the proposed tunnel alternative. There is currently litigation pending, although, as I note in my staff report, we are not recommending that we join that litigation due to a recent decision by the Supreme Court, and I'll go into that just briefly. The, both the City of South Pasadena, or, I'm sorry, the City of South Pasadena and Lockingdown, both challenged Measure R, which was the LA County Metro Sales Tax, Transportation Sales Tax. There's a component of that sales tax measure which included, as a project, as required by law, the list of the proposed projects, which included the funding for the proposed 710 Tunnel Study. And as a result, the contention was that the California Environmental Quality Act had been violated by not first doing an analysis of that proposed study, of that 710 Tunnel Project, and doing that study prior to putting it on the ballot. The case at the trial court level was unsuccessful. The case is now currently pending before the Court of Appeal. In the interim, the City of Santa Barbara had a very similar case pending. That case was resolved negatively to the challengers to Measure A, which was similar to Measure R in LA County. That case then went to the Court of Appeal. The Court of Appeal, in a published decision, affirmed the trial court's decision, finding that the California Environmental Quality Act was not violated. And the California Supreme Court, upon request for review, not only denied review, but denied a request to de-publish it, sending a pretty, a fairly clear message that anyone challenging a measure such as Measure A, which is almost in substance identical to the challenge of Measure R, would fail. And in speaking to representatives from Lockingdown Flintridge, they've indicated that, in discussions with their attorney, that they may be essentially, if not abandoning the case, basically putting it on the back burner and not paying much attention, or spending much money on it. I've noted in the memorandum that the City of Pasadena, the staff resources, both outside consultants and some in-house folks that they use, that they've devoted to the issue involving the 710 gap closure over the years, fairly extensive. They do use some very competent, well-respected attorneys, both Antonio Rossman and Jan Chatton-Brown, Jan Chatton-Brown being a CEQA specialist, and Mr. Rossman being a litigator, both very well-qualified, very good lawyers, also, that comes with a price tag. They use consultants, they have consultants on board, a geotechnical consultant, but those necessary consultants to properly evaluate the reports that have begun to come out of the studies, as well as those that are anticipated. I've provided some, again, some options for the city council to consider as to the depth and breadth of the level you want staff to get involved, and it ranges anywhere from, essentially stay the course, consistent with the, and continue to do the things that the council directed us to do in resolution, and the resolution adopted in July of this past year, in '09, where if staff finds that there is an issue that needs commenting, the staff may prepare a letter for the mayor's signature and send it out, that the mayor is authorized to continue to engage in lobbying and other efforts to oppose a gap closure, whether it be surface or tunnel. And from then, there are other options which would include more in-depth staff monitoring, retaining consultants to both monitor, review, and comment on reports that have come out and that we anticipate will come through the study. An option to engage our federal and state lobbyists to watch for legislation. For example, there is a piece of legislation that no one would have, I think, without really paying attention, would have found, it was SB 1010, that on its face doesn't appear that it would affect the 710 Tunnel, and yet, when you look into it and analyze it, it potentially could exempt a transportation project that might be specifically designated, such as a 710 Tunnel or other similar project, from a challenge under CEQA. And so it's this type of legislation that we might want to have our lobbyists, legislative lobbyists, both at the state level and possibility at the federal level as well, be on the lookout for, so that we can react appropriately if something like that comes along. Those are just some of the options. Again, there are others. It really depends on the council's desire. How might, I did not indicate, for example, in fiscal, under fiscal impact, what the financial impact would be in any of these options, because right now, until we get some direction, it's fairly difficult. We don't have figures, for example, from South Pasadena, except for one of the consultants we understand is being paid about $3,000 a month for their continued efforts in providing information and in engaging in the, I think I actually noted it in the staff report as well, it was a strategy consultant, I believe, or a public relations consultant, but one of the two have paid $3,000 a month for their efforts in opposing the 710 gap closure. I'm available to answer any questions, and Mr. Zern, and Mr. Zern can also respond to any questions, he's been involved in preparing some of the letters, and his staff in monitoring the proposed project, and that's what I'll call it, this, a proposed project to date.
Any questions or comments?
I'll have comments after this public speaks.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll go to the public. Carol Kramer, followed by Bill Wiseman. And please turn in cards on this item. This will be, is this for this item? Yep, okay, that'll be the last card I'll accept.
Carol Kramer. I want to thank the City of Glendale for protecting the citizens of the whole region by continuing its opposition to the 710 Tunnel. A tunnel will only hurt our region by bringing pollution and congestion. The Caltrans 710 Tunnel feasibility analysis is flawed. It failed to tell us anything about the project costs, traffic noise, and air quality issues due to the planned expansion of the ports and the projected addition of 92,000 daily trucks through the different zones which have been part of the original federally-funded scope of work. They missed the inability of a tunnel to stay open 100 percent of the time. Caltrans did not include plans on how to best deal with any tunnel closings due to post-minor earthquake inspections or accidents and repairs, et cetera. How would the cities in the area through which the tunnel runs cope with the overflow of excess traffic spilling onto our city streets from one of these full or partial closings, when the surface streets in the surrounding areas are already expected to be gridlocked due to completion of the tunnel? And where is the discussion of the impact on the surrounding streets to the planned toll aspect of the tunnel? Why is it that Caltrans study doesn't honestly address the influx of pollution to the whole LA region that a tunnel will bring if built for transporting goods from the ports of LA and Long Beach? The projected traffic from the ports to the tunnel area will only increase congestion. Since traffic accidents are proportional to congestion, Caltrans' suggestion that this tunnel will somehow improve traffic, pollution, and safety is contrary to common sense and reality. Thank you again for having the common sense to realize that the 710 Tunnel is a bad idea. And please strengthen your actions against the tunnel. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Wiseman, followed by Mary Ann Perata.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman, resident of Glendale. And I wanted to say, first of all, I am very grateful to live in a city whose elected officials take very seriously issues regarding the health of their constituents. And I really, speaking for myself, I believe the health area is one of the biggest issues with regards to the proposed 710 Tunnel Project. It is now known scientifically, it's not a matter of speculation, it's not a matter of guesswork, that ultrafine particulates from heavy-duty diesel engines are known to cause asthma and other lung problems. And most of these problems are most critical in young children that are developing. And so for me, the issue of schools that are close to freeways is something we really need to pay attention to. Now, since I've been involved in the struggle to try and avoid getting this tunnel put in, one of the things that often we hear are, we get accused of being nimby's, not in my backyard. And I'd like to tell you a little bit about my backyard while I'm up here. My backyard is the Chrysena Valley. The Chrysena Valley, according to the US government, used to have some of the best air quality in the entire United States. It also used to be a very quiet place to live. And that all ended when the 210 freeway came in. And hundreds of families were relocated to make room for that freeway. So when people tell me that our area hasn't sacrificed enough for the common good, I totally reject that argument. We have sacrificed significantly in the Chrysena Valley. And in closing, I would just like to say, I don't expect the city to write a blank check to underwrite litigation to end this, but to the extent that it's possible that you do so, I'd really very much appreciate it. We have half a dozen schools within 500 feet of the 210 freeway in Lockersena, and the additional traffic from heavy-duty diesel trucks would cause, I believe, unacceptable health impacts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Ann Perata, followed by David Myers.
I'd like to give the city clerk this information to hand out to the city council. Mary Ann Perata, South Pasadena, glad to be here. It was beneficial to have the Girl Scouts here tonight, because I was a Girl Scout once, probably still am, because it will be their grandchildren that you will be protecting tonight in considering your opposition to the 710 freeway. In 2004, USC's Landmark Children's Health Study confirmed that thousands of Southern California children living by high-traffic freeways were contracting higher levels of crippling asthma, and children living in smoggy areas were suffering impaired lung development. That was in 2004, it's five years later. They have lost 15 percent of their lung function. I'm handing out this LA Weekly article on the human health costs of our children living by freeways. Not only children, but this article states, quote, "Hardening of the arteries is twice as common among citizens living within a block of an LA freeway." In fact, USC Environmental Health researcher Rob McConnell states, "The very smallest particulate matter pass right into the brain. These particulates can be metals, gas emissions from cars and trucks, tire rubber, and tire brake dust." Now, there's a new law that says you can't build a school 500 feet from a freeway, but you can sure build a freeway 500 feet from a school. In fact, the surface freeway in South Pasadena was going to take part of the football field. The time for more geotechnical studies are over. The time for action against the freeway is now. Remember, there will be 300,000 cars and trucks a day on the 710 freeway coming out of those portals. 300,000 cars and trucks a day. Thank you for your vigorous opposition to this environmental and economical disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. David Myers. David Myers, followed by Nancy Kent.
Good evening, city council members, staff. My name is David Myers. I completely want to thank you for even considering opposing and getting involved to a greater degree than you already have with opposition towards this gap closure. The other thing that I would like to suggest is, I would like to encourage the city to redirect any of Measure R's funds towards other local projects. Local contractors, local unions, local ironworkers. We don't need the foreign tunnel builders coming and taking millions and billions of our dollars. If we took all that money and we just fixed what we have, we actually separated every rail crossing with those funds, then we wouldn't have to deal with the whistles, the idiots who park their vehicles on the tracks, and all the other repercussions from that grade And the trucks, they do, the additional truck load that this would bring to the area, it does affect, and it costs us. Back in 2006, I'm going to hand these out, as a reminder, the city looked into ways to cease the engine braking down the 210. I don't know what ended up happening with that. But see, we spend money on the effects of these large projects. I would like to see any money, especially from our tax dollars, redirected towards feasible projects that are already there. Thank you.
Nancy Kent, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Nancy Kent, resident of Glendale. I agree with what the other speakers have already said. I won't restate the reasons they gave, but I hope that the city will do whatever you think best to oppose the closure of the 710 gap, and the millions of dollars that are being spent on the studies to close that gap should be spent on something else. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond.
Did you say millions, Nancy? Or did you mean billions?
Trillions?
Billions.
Trillions. All right, my name is Margaret Hammond. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and people in the audience. I've been against this tunnel from day one, when I heard about it, and with the thought that, and I attended meetings like, I don't know, four or five years ago even, that where they're going to dump that tunnel, the traffic from it. Right off the 210 up there, within, I'd say, 50 feet, there are at least six schools. And one of the schools, Flint Ridge, the bridge from the freeway, I mean, the freeway goes right over that school. Now, as it happens, my daughter and my two grandsons live with, at the backyard of Flint Ridge. I have seen the effect on both my grandchildren. I swear, from the business of the breeding, the bad air, from just the number of cars and so forth that go through there now, let alone if we had another, how many hundred thousand cars would be dumped on that same, in that same area. My feeling is, are not, the homes in La Cañada at least as valuable as those in South Pasadena, and should be protected from, I mean, who's going to want to buy a home sitting beside where thousands of cars are being dumped out of a tunnel? The value of those homes will go down terrifically. I hope La Cañada remembers to fight, and as a matter of fact, I'm going to their city council, that's one of the things I'm going to be doing. You know, we had no choice when the 134 divided Glendale. They told us it was for the good of the community, how we'd benefit, and so forth. Well, okay, guess we can't do anything about that. But what benefit will this tunnel bring to La Cañada? All I've heard is how many jobs. But then, what jobs, and to whom? How many billions, trillions will go to the private engineers and consultants? Should I call them privateers? That's my opinion on it. I'm glad the city is taking the attitude, we should be fighting it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that was the final card. Comments? Mr. Weaver.
I'd just like all of you to think about something. During my lifetime, every single freeway in Southern California was built during my lifetime. I was in my 30s before the first environmental document was created. Statistics, environmental documents have grown tremendously. But I ask you, all those freeways that have been built, that we all use, what if none of them were there because of public opposition? Think about it. Every single freeway taken away because everyone disrupted a community, it took out houses and businesses, and caused increased pollution, et cetera. Every single freeway. So what, how would you get around? 1958, when the population of Southern California was a lot less, I worked during the summer in Oxnard, California. It was approximately a three-hour drive from Glendale to Oxnard to work. I'd drive home on the weekends to see the family. Today, I drive to Oxnard in one hour. Take that freeway alone out. Can you believe the streets with the population today getting around in Southern California with no freeways? What would be the, what would be the attitude of the vast majority of people in Southern California if you couldn't get on any freeway? I think there'd be a tremendous opposition. We're sitting here trying to increase the speed of getting people around now, getting them out of their cars, not the high-speed rail and everything else, because we're gridlocked. If there was no freeways, every street in Southern California would be gridlocked all the time. I just say, think about that. Now, I'm not stating what my position is yet on a tunnel or not, but I spent 37-year career as a project manager, as an engineer, knowing the processes, having dealt with cities and counties and state and federal agencies in huge multimillion-dollar projects, even up in the billions. And I know the process from the planning stage to the actual stage of final selection of a route, and the environmental documents go with us. We're a long way away from that point. We've got five different directions it may go. That's just the geotechnical studies. The analysis hasn't been made, and environmental documents haven't been done. We don't know which route it's going to go. Nothing has been done. So based on my career, my profession, for all my adult life, I have to reserve my opinions until it's further down the line. I know the ones that are here and people at home don't like that. Oh, no, I got to step out now. But from a professional standpoint, as a project manager and engineer, I say that is impossible to do today, even in spite of all the emotional wrangling it's going to cause, and it will get worse. It wasn't a project I hardly ever worked on, where there was not public opposition to what we were doing. And you had to weigh it all out, but there's a time and a place to act. In my professional opinion, now is not the time. Doesn't mean I'm for or against. It means I need facts and information to make an informed decision, which I think is my responsibility as your representative. So I'm going to wait. South Pasadena, Burbank, whatever, have taken a similar position, as far as I know from reading this. They're not opposing, they want more information, and that's what I want. Go ahead, shake your head, no. That's your right. But I know I am absolutely right.
Okay, no comments from the audience. Are you done, Ms. Weaver?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, well, just to be accurate, though, the city council passed a resolution pointing on record as opposing.
It was four to one.
The, I wasn't going to mention that, by a four to one vote, we took a, we passed a resolution opposing the tunnel and closing the gap, et cetera, et cetera. So that's exactly what we've done, and now tonight, we're talking about other things that we can do. As a matter of fact, Mr. Howard has given us five different options to consider. Ms. Friedman?
I'm against the 710 extension, the 710 tunnel. I think it's not, and not just because it's bad for the region, but because I think it's bad policy for the state. I think it's backward thinking, it doesn't move us forward. I would turn Mr. Weaver's question into a slightly different question, which is, where would we be if we hadn't dismantled our trolley and light rail system? I think we'd be, I think we'd be in a much better place. If we had a lesser highway system, I believe we would have stronger communities. I think we would have more transportation options that made more sense. And I think that over time, we'll get there. And to me, the problem with this is that it's putting a lot of money into the wrong place. That's a big part of it. And that money would go a long way towards restoring more sensible transportation methods to reduce gridlock and still get people around more efficiently. I support options one, two, and three. I do not support option four, because to me, it's not a geotechnical question, it's a policy question, and this council's been very clear about the policy. I don't know about option five. I don't know if it's necessary right now, but I feel that one through three, utilizing our lobbyists, our influence, and all of that is important. That said, I'm a little confused by the timing of this coming in front of us right now. It's my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the Metropolitan Transit Authority, the MTA, had a vote that included the 710 just a few weeks ago. I would have appreciated the opportunity for Glendale to clearly signal our position at that important board. Unfortunately, our representative on the MTA, Mr. Najarian, chose not to oppose the 710 extension when they took this vote. Now, I want to be very clear that this is not by any means an attack on Mr. Najarian. I very much value the work he does at the MTA. However, I feel that Glendale lost a major opportunity to send a clear message to the MTA, and I'm sorry that our representative, who's representing Glendale, chose not to alert the council ahead of that vote so that we would have an opportunity to discuss this issue. And I understand that he's in a difficult political position on the MTA, but it seems to me that it's important to oppose this project in Glendale, but it's even more important that all of us go on record in opposition to it when we represent the city on regional decision-making bodies. And a no vote at the MTA would have been a clear signal and an official record of Glendale's opposition to the extension. So I, for one, am very disappointed that we missed that opportunity.
Raymond. Mr. Najarian, go ahead.
Let's go to Mr. Weaver. Well, I think before my colleague summarizes what she thinks my actions were at the MTA, that she first get her facts straight. The transcripts of the MTA meeting were clear, and in no uncertain terms did I oppose the 710 tunnel. I spoke out strongly and vehemently against it. The vote, which you're referring to, obviously, I don't think you're familiar with what the actual vote was. It was a vote to advance a public-private partnership analysis of six projects. One of them was the 710 tunnel. Another project was very critical to the northern part of the county, which would also result in fewer trucks using the 210 freeway. That was the High Desert Corridor. And what I did on that vote was I abstained, and they needed a certain number of positive votes for that measure to pass. The abstention, which I made clear, was due to my support for the one highway project through the desert with very little ecological impact, which I supported, versus my strong opposition to the 710 tunnel. I have been strong on the 710 in the opposition since day one. Now, I think some of my colleagues are jumping on board and playing armchair quarterback with the way that I'm dealing with it. The MTA board is a very complex board, with many, many powerful individuals that need to be dealt with in a certain way. So to imply that I am not representing the region's or city's interests on the MTA board is completely false, and I'm really, I'm taken back by what you've just sprung on me, Ms. Friedman. I think it's completely out of line and completely mischaracterizes my position and my efforts on this. I go from city to city fighting the 710. I was in South Pasadena just last week at their city council meeting. I'm receiving, you know, I'm receiving nasty letters from consultants who are not happy with the position that I'm taking. So I'm really, that's the last I expected from you, Ms. Friedman, let me tell you that. Let me continue with my comments. Our opposition to the 710 tunnel is no less important than the smoking ordinance that we just passed. The tunnel is going to bring thousands and thousands of not just cars, Mr. Weaver, these aren't just cars that are driving, it's not you driving to Oxnard. These are heavy, freight-laden diesel trucks, many of them from Mexico, many of them without any sort of emissions controls, spewing the ultrafine particulate matter throughout our region, throughout our valley. And yes, we used to have clean air quality. That's the irony, we used to. This is such an important issue to the city, and when I think about the things that we've talked about, and we've spent a lot of time on over the last few months, we had a big hoopla over a gate, we had windows come before us, we have design issues, you know, should the roof be this way or that way. This is the single most important issue facing us as residents of Glendale, of the La Cressena region, of the entire northern part of Los Angeles. And we have to fight, we have to fight now. And how can we fight this? One of the key elements towards funding this, and this is about a 10 or 11 billion, I didn't mean to call out your error, Nancy, but it is a 10 to 11 billion dollar project. Now, the Measure R funding only gives it about 800 million. Where's the rest of that money going? Well, first, 800 million is going to the team and cadre of consultants and geotechnical experts, whose job is to say that this can be done, this will be done, we're going to do it. By the way, here's my, here's my monthly invoice, I'm ready for some more money. But it's going to be funded by a Spanish company who is ready to invest in the tunnel. Now, why would a Spanish company invest in the tunnel? Number one, they're going to invest the money and reap the benefits of a 20 to 30 dollar a trip toll. And that's going to be, that's going to be for years and decades and decades. Now, this type of investment doesn't come easy. It's a risky investment. If the Spanish company, or anyone who is interested in taking this on, sees that there is community opposition, organized community opposition, they're going to be very reluctant to getting involved in this. This is where we're going to fight, and this is where we're going to win. We need to organize as a community, not just the city of Glendale, but the residents of La Cressena, La Cañada, Altadena, Sun Valley, Tahunga, all the way through. Hopefully, our neighbors in Burbank will feel the same way. And by putting up a united front and making enough noise opposing this tunnel, they're going to think twice, because it's extremely expensive. They want this investment to go smoothly without a hitch. And let me tell you, at the MTA, at the highest levels of the MTA, they see no obstacles in the path of this tunnel. This is not something that's 10, 20 years away. They're worrying about the They're worrying about the seating charts for the groundbreaking, and it's going to be done in less than five years. So anyone who thinks this is all way off, it's not in my lifetime, they're getting ready to put this thing through, and they're licking their chops. But, I mean, do you blame an engineer? Can you blame his excitement for being involved in one of the greatest tunneling and construction projects on the West Coast? Of course, this is a, you know, this is a Super Bowl for engineers and consultants. They don't want a bunch of yahoos from Glendale and La Cressena to stand in their way. Forget about that asthma. And it's more than just asthma, it is the disease atherosclerosis, which leads to strokes. And how ironic that we're having our run for the strokes, the downtown dash, this Sunday. We need to coordinate our efforts with all the communities and get together. South Pasadena fought this thing, they held off, they held the fort for decades without help from anyone else. It's time for us to get ready. In the spirit of the Hurt Locker, it's time to lock and load. I mean, Glendale has to come out firing at this point. I agree with every single point, one through five, and let's do all of them. And we should be the leader. People look to us as the leader in this, we're the third-largest city, we're the largest city affected by this. We need to take the lead role. South Pasadena has lessons that they've learned, they have their infrastructure in place, their setup. We need to take the lead, we need to stop this thing, we need to stop it now, because it's going to be here if we just sit complacently.
Ms. Friedman, and then Mr. Raymond.
Well, once again, I just want to clarify that this was not any kind of a personal attack. No one is doubting, Mr. Najarian, that you are not extremely dedicated to this cause. No one's saying that you haven't been a leader. And if we're, I think you said, globbing on, it's only because you've convinced us that this is important. So please take that in the spirit it was offered. However, I do believe that, because this was an important vote, that this council should have had a heads-up going in and been able to weigh in on it. Because even though, I'm sure you had very good reasons to abstain, I would have at least liked to have the opportunity to discuss a no vote. I think it would have sent a message. I don't know, we haven't had that discussion, but I think it would have been prudent to have brought this to us before that vote and made that a part of it, so that we could have weighed in in stronger fashion in front of that board. That's the end, that's all I'll say on that.
Mr. Raymond.
Well, first of all, I do not support the 710 connection, period, end of story. Many speakers who spoke during the public input portion of this debate expressed it far more simply, clearly than I could. So all I will add is that with some of the rhetoric that I've heard in the past here, what was the name of the paid lobbyist, I wanted to use the word hack, but I'll refrain from calling him that. What was his name?
Nat Reed.
Oh, Nat Reed, right, right. About the benefits of this, about some of the supposed polls and studies, and the linear thinking that we've been treated to here, that we must wait, we must wait. It's funny that Mr. Meyer was here speaking, because had we applied that same kind of thinking, we might well have a housing development in your backyard in Mountain Oaks if we had just waited. Wait to see, wait to see. In the name of what we've called progress in the past, we are now asked to sort of throw our brains out the window, to ignore reason, common sense, to wait for an outcome, the 710 freeway connector that is assured and it's certain, or some kind of poetry of linear thinking. I'm sorry, I don't need to stick my hand into a fire to understand I'm going to get burned. I'm a native of the Cressena Valley. I understand how this game was played in the '70s with the 210 freeway. I understand the impacts on that valley, and the impacts on my own family, and on neighbors, and so on. You know, perhaps there are some of us who don't think that the tremendous increase in population in the state of California is such a great thing. And some of the freeways that we talk about that were built in Mr. Weaver's lifetime, all of them apparently.
Yep.
You know, there's that correlation, maybe there's something to do with you, Mr. Weaver.
Is that a joke, or compliment?
It was, it was a joke, yes.
Okay.
A ribbing, kind of.
Ha ha.
Okay. Anyway, the argument could be made, that without that extensive freeway system, that we would not have seen the huge increase, and some believe in unsupportable population in the state of California. But in any case, for this councilman, it is a clear decision, I don't need to wait. I don't need to wait for feasibilities to know that the end result is something I don't want. So although I also believe that item four is an item that is not a policy-driven item, I'm going to support all five of these items, because to the extent that that can be used in any way, shape, or form to push this item back, I'm happy to support it. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Weaver.
To take me back before I was born, way back, when Portola arrived in the Los Angeles basin back in the 1600s, guess what he found here? He found Indian tribes and smog. Because due to the inversion layer that exists in the LA basin, there was smog in the 1600s or before. Of course, it's increased because we all showed up here, built freeways, whatever. But part of our problem is the nature of the environment we live in. Streetcars was mentioned. I used to ride the streetcars all the time, and I was sure upset when they were removed back in the '50s. The deal back there was Mayor Sam Muerte of Los Angeles made a deal with Detroit, let's replace the trains and bring in buses. And there went the streetcars into oblivion, and all the rights away, I've watched over the years, be gobbled up and built over, destroyed. Now, there's housing projects over the rail lines. We lost an opportunity, we had right-of-way at least, even if we didn't have the streetcars, lost it all. And I want to stick to my position, I think I'm right in my own mind, just want it to be known whenever you're writing anything, that the majority of the council supported what's going to happen here tonight, because I don't. So we'll see what the state of California does with it.
Okay, I'm also...
Oh, I was just going to ask, Mr. Weaver, clarification, are you saying that when Portola arrived here, you were not here?
Exactly, I think I made that clear.
I just want to get that on the record.
Thought he was going to say he was in elementary school, but...
And if you're wondering how I knew that, is the Los Angeles River was my project. Whenever I was involved in a project, I went back to the origin. I went back in the 1500s and studied the history of the Los Angeles River. And when he landed on the east bank of the LA River, where modern-day Los Angeles is, in the records, in rights, was smog, it wasn't the word smog, but clouds, it was all cloudy. That's where I learned it, from reading.
Absolutely, I believe the Indians, I believe the Indians called Santa Monica Bay the Bay of Smokes.
There you go.
Was the name before the Spanish came.
Right on.
I am against the 710 and voted to pass the resolution, et cetera. I agree with one through four, right down to monitoring and everything else, getting our legislative people involved. My question on five is, what exactly are we going to join? I mean, we're going to join pending legal actions or future legal actions? That's kind of an open-ended, what a...
And a good point, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as noted in the report, we're not recommending joining the pending legal action, even South Pasadena, I believe, understands that to be somewhat of a lost cause at this point. However, South Pasadena has been vigorous in their opposition to the gap closure, at least the surface gap closure, and anticipating which way they're, well, I don't want to speculate on the resolution that's going to come before them in coming weeks, but anticipating there may be future litigation, we would, this council would give us their direction, we would begin collaborating with their attorneys now, just discussing, having meetings, attending meetings with them, discussing what the future holds, other legal theories they might have. And if something crystallizes, a particular legal action crystallizes, we'd come back to you, more than likely, in closed session, to discuss joining that legal action, whether it's through using in-house staff here, or retaining either their outside counsel or another outside counsel.
Well, look, I mean, I'm prepared to support that when the time comes, but I just don't see what we're going to be doing at this point. But, I mean, for instance, South Pasadena, they don't care about a tunnel, from what I can read in their new positions. They don't care if a tunnel is being built or not. What they don't want is the open...
I think they do, I mean, they actually, they were a party and challenged Measure R. What they did take a position on was this, they basically said that we would not oppose this neutral, route-neutral, boring alternative, but they specifically and expressly reserved the right to take a final stand, depending on the integrity of the study.
But they haven't taken it yet.
Not, but they, my understanding from their March 3 meeting is that they've asked for a resolution to come back, where, again, I don't want to speculate on the outcome, but I think it may be in opposition to the tunnel project.
Okay, well, like I say, I guess...
They're against it, they're against it.
They're just not coming out publicly and stating...
Well, why are they not coming out publicly? Does anyone know?
Well, again, in my conversations with their city attorney, contract city attorney, a lot of this had to do with some legislation that Mr. Sadio had put up to try to, once and for all, end the funding for any surface gap closure. That legislation was vetoed by the governor in October. Again, as I think Councilman Najarian aptly put it, the politics of how some of these things work out and play out sometimes don't reflect the true feelings of certain groups or individuals involved. I think Pasadena may be, South Pasadena may be coming out formally with a resolution that may reflect a public position, which, again, may have been taken by some individuals...
Engaging with South Pasadena or La Cañada to discuss and to, that would be done by the staff at this point, right?
Yes.
Not by outside...
Yes, it would be done, my recommendation would be at the staff, at the staff level, whether it myself or another one of the members of my staff, we begin collaborating with outside counsel for South Pasadena, La Cañada, Flint Ridge as well, they have a different firm, as well as the in-house city attorney for, contract counsel for La Cañada, Flint Ridge, and South Pasadena.
And how many hours do you anticipate that would...
Initially, probably not many. As things begin to move forward and matters develop, it could be greater, but we can always come back to you, letting you know what the staff resources are. Obviously, our staff has their own work to do in defending the interests of the city and providing advice, et cetera. So there would be a limit to the amount of time, if it got very aggressive and it looked like there was going to be a considerable need to invest staff resources, we might come to you with a request to look at outside counsel, for example, if the need arises. But at this point in time, it would be more on a meeting and collaborative basis to begin to discuss and determine what options might be available on the legal front.
Okay. Then I have a question for Mr. Najarian. The Spanish firm, I mean, was there an RFP issued, and they are the winners of the RFP?
No, they have been in contact with staff and have indicated a willingness to invest in such a project.
But there hasn't been a request for a proposal, it hasn't gotten to that point yet, I mean, it's not...
You wouldn't have to recuse yourself, would you?
Yeah.
No, no, it's not at the, it's not at the RFP, it's going to be a design-build project.
I think I know which company's going to bid on it.
It's going to be a design-build, which further streamlines the entire process, so...
Okay. All right, are there any more questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, just an observation, as you were talking to the city attorney about the staff commitment, I think Scott was referencing the staff commitment on five to sort of monitor and communicate with other attorneys. One through four, though, depending on the degree that we take that, if Mr. Najarian's description of what he'd like the city to do carries the day here, that is essentially making this a very important issue and committing considerable resources, time, and energy to taking the lead on opposing the tunnel. And we can do that, but unlikely we can do that entirely with existing staff. And we'd come back to you, my plan would be to come back to you with a budget, some alternatives, and a report on what it will take to gear up an effort to become much more assertive. Now, we can be assertive, but there's going to be degrees. We can utilize existing staff, existing lobbyists, sort of within the existing time that we have to do this, but if you're going to take a more of a leadership role in opposing it, much the way South Pass has for many years, then I suspect it's going to take more resources than just doing it with an existing staff. And we'd come back with a plan. One thing I'd like to do is speak to South Pass about the level of resources they've committed, the sorts of people they're using, and how they've gone about this, and then come back to you and talk about what level do you want to commit to this. I mean, we can do one through four, but one through four will have different degrees of commitment and resources applied to it as well.
Well, and that's a question, I mean, we're going into budget deliberations, we have some hard choices to make, and the idea of just going out and, as you say, leading the charge, I'm, you know, I'm not convinced yet that we're at that point. That may be the case a year from now or two years from now, but at this point in time, I don't know.
Well, one thing we can do, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is we can bring you back a report that talks about some of those differing degrees. Here's what we think leading the charge is, if we're going to become a leader in this issue. Here is what, joining with South Pass, La Cañada, it may be contributing to help support some of the consultants and individuals I already use. We can bring you back some sense of that.
Okay, Mr. Raymond.
Yeah, I would like to see the, some dollar values assigned to some of this.
If I can, I wouldn't want to leave here this evening and have you think we're going to take the lead in this, and then frankly underestimate what that will entail.
All right, so the question is, how far are we going to go in terms of our options? Mr. Zern?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just for clarification purposes, when we're looking at number four, we may want to change some of that wording. This specifically states the draft geotechnical summary report. That report, for all intents and purposes, is done. We, the city of Glendale, through the mayor, has made our comments on that, but they're very consistent with the resolution you passed previously, which is, we didn't get into details about the technicals. We had said, we think you shouldn't have done it, we don't think you should do any gap closure.
That's a letter I just signed.
Yes. So that final document will be presented on March 30 in South Pasadena. So what I would recommend is maybe we reword that to say, any related studies that would encompass studies in the future related to this project, so a little bit more general. I don't know what the city attorney thinks about, but more general, because this, for all intents and purposes, this one is finished, and we've made our comments consistent with what you had previously directed us to do.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, what I anticipate bringing back to you is some alternatives in these degrees up to and including, Glendale takes every effort to oppose and stop the tunnel project, regardless of what studies we may have to evaluate or what we may need to do to do that. And I give you some levels of cost and commitment and time that it's going to take on all the levels to do that. There'll be lots of studies, lots of meetings, lots of efforts, probably more lawsuits on the horizon. And if we're going to fully engage in this and do it at a level that Mr. Najarian has requested, then it'll take considerable time and energy. And we'll give you that, as well as a couple of other options. So you'll have some different levels.
Okay, well, but I would think that we would be okay by passing, let's say, one through four. I don't see that that would, that would work. Are the rest of you comfortable with that, passing option one through four?
Well, what is four now?
Well, I was going to say, Mr. Mayor, given Mr. Zern's comments, it seems like it's a simple...
And actually, four should be any future-related studies and reports.
Utilize in-house staff or consultants to analyze any... Mr. Starbuck?
Yeah, actually, I think one through five is rather constraining in attempting to describe what effort we would need to begin to undertake if we're going to take an active opposition position to the tunnel. And again, not suggesting that you all agree with going to the extreme of us becoming the lead on this, but I think we can go back and craft for you with the, I hear a clear consensus on wanting to take an active position against the tunnel and being more engaged in it. We'll bring you back some levels of engagement that I think incorporate one through five in a much more general way, so that you're not just constrained, for example, to the draft geotechnical summary, but we would frankly anticipate monitoring and giving feedback on any number of different studies that are there now and will be in the future on this project.
Yeah, but I want to pass some resolutions tonight, or some action items tonight, because I don't want those people who are wanting to build this tunnel to get the impression the Glendale City Council had a number of options before them, and they didn't pass anything. So I want to pass something tonight to send a message, and then we can refine it and increase what it is that we're going to do or not do, but I want to pass something. So I hope I can get a motion... So I hope I can get a motion on some of the options.
Trying to craft something consistent with the mayor's comments along the lines of what the city manager just indicated. The motion is to direct staff as follows, and it's just blank beyond that. I mean, to take an active role in opposition to the 710 tunnel, consistent with options one through five. City manager is further directed to return to council with a report including the degrees of...
Let me suggest we call the report an action plan.
Sure, an action plan.
For implementing the city council's direction in furthering the city's opposition to 710 tunnel.
Okay, sounds good. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move it. Second.
Second?
Yep.
And let me say to the proponents, I suggest that they spend the money on light rail. East-west connection would be nice from Pasadena to hook up with the gold line to go on to the, through Glendale-Burbank to the airport and then even hook up with the orange line that runs the rubber trolley buses that run all the way to Warner Center. That'd be a great use of the money. As we flew in from Washington, I flew in in the afternoon and there was a clear, clear view of the Alameda Corridor. You literally saw the trench with the overhangs and didn't really see any trains, but anyway, they could extend the Alameda Corridor all the way out to the Inland Empire. That'd be a wonderful idea. They could even go further up north to try to link to those trucks and depots that head up north. I mean, they just don't need to build this, period. They just don't. They don't need to do it, so... Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me for interrupting. I just want to make sure we have some clarification on the motion so we don't have a language inaccurate, because obviously there's strong feelings, I think, to make sure that there's some action taken that sends a message. And so the language that I have, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Starbuck, if I got this incorrectly, is to take an active role in, the staff directive as follows, is to take an active role in opposition to the 710 tunnel. City manager is further directed to return to council with an action plan, consistent with council opposition to the 710 tunnel proposal. I capture it?
That's what we moved. Let's try it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
9A, under hearings. His Director of Community Planning regarding Glendale Municipal Code amendments relate to design review, case number PZON 2009007. 9A1 is ordinance for introduction related to design review title 30 Glendale Municipal Code.
Mr. Starbuck.
Yes, let me go to Mr. Hagani, Director of Community Planning, for the staff report. Hassan.
Thank you, Mr. Starbuck, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a proposed ordinance that comes after your direction. You initiated the preparation of this ordinance to fine-tune the design review process. After your direction, we took the comments you gave and we put them in an ordinance, went to the planning commission and met with the two DRBs, and this is the proposed ordinance as you directed us to do. If you have any questions, Wolfgang Kraus is here to answer your questions.
Are there any questions or comments?
No.
Would someone like to introduce? I don't have any speaker cards. Would someone like to introduce?
There is a hearing.
I will open the signal speakers, close a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, move 9A1.
All right.
Second.
The ordinance has been, it's just for introduction, is that correct? Yes. The ordinance has been introduced at 9A1. Next, please.
Return to oral communications, Mayor and council, and this portion where discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker has a lot of five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And bless you. And the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
All right. We'll start with Eric Marcanian, followed by Gene Hannah.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and the council. My name is Eric Marcanian. We own the property at 229 North Central. The reason that I'm here today is to talk about the idea of closures of public parking for housing, specifically Lot 12 on Salem Street. The environmental document on proposed project has no negative impacts and, in my opinion, is completely false. We are not against affordable housing and would not have a problem with this if it did not affect Lot 12. The project would wreck any future development of the area and has a negative impact on all surrounding business. Where will the patrons of these businesses park? I ask you to look to the future and save Lot 12 for a project that, and save Lot 12 for a project that develops the area to its full potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Gene Hannah, followed by Margaret Hammond. Gene Hannah. Okay, Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, again, your honor, and city council, and members of staff and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. The subject was brought up about speeding on certain streets, and I have talked about this before. When they were doing construction on Glendale Avenue and Las Felas and so forth, it kind of, a lot of people discovered that Cypress went through and they could take it and go over the hill and around to York and so forth. We have had nothing but problems. I went out, yesterday I was trying to, I was renting the house across the street and telling the people what a wonderful area we had and how quiet and calm, and all of a sudden, I tried to cross the street and almost got hit on my own street, and then just was like a speedway. I mean, the people commented, oh my gosh, what's going on? Where are all these cars coming from? And I said, hmm, that's the way it's been. So I guess I've got to go back and get a petition. Fortunately, a lot of the people that would have signed the petition, the ladies, you know, our hill was called the Hill of Seven Widows, and I'm the last of those widows that lived there, and they had all signed the petition. So I guess I'm going to have to get a few more of the younger ones to go along with me on that. And of course, one of the things is trash barrels being left out. Probably not in your area, but in my area, they get left out. And today with the wind, they were blowing down in the street, and I was hoping some of those speeding cars would hit those trash barrels, to tell you the truth. I thought, well, maybe it'll teach them a lesson. But it is a thought about why the trash barrels are left out all the time, weekend, day out, whatever. It's not good for the neighborhood and it's against the law. It is against the law. You're not supposed to be leaving them out. And as I said, when they do get hit and they have trash in, it makes it pretty messy in the streets. So I'm hoping people will take in mind, keep in mind that they need to take their trash barrels in and put them wherever they're not a hazard to anybody else. One of my beefs has always been about the signs and the billboards. Mr. Seffian isn't here now, and he was a great one, that he helped get a lot of those signs off of San Fernando Road, the billboards, all over town. We paid to get rid of them. And now I understand, and I seem to have missed it, that that came up about the billboards that Mr. Caruso wants to put up all around Americana. Talked about it and talked about it. And I talked to somebody like Lila Ramirez. She was one of the 15, like me, that was sued by Mr. Caruso because we said he was going to put billboards up according to what he showed in his plans. He denied it. No, that is not true, that he was not, that we just made that up, just like we made up that he was going to close off Orange and he was going to close off Harvard. God help me, if that judge were around, that little old Irishman, I tell you, I'd be after him, but he's passed away, unfortunately, within about a year. And there was another, there was a couple of other things. But Mr. Caruso sued us and said, no, he was not going to do that, that we just made that up. Now, I am against these signs and billboards. There's no reason for them. If you do it, it sets precedence, and we have tried to stop this. You may, all the guys on brand, all those, I remember, all those little shops and stores, take down all their signs, and yet here you are, you allow Mr. Caruso, the big, you know, honcho of signs and billboards and Eiffel Towers, so forth, to get away with it again. And I just do not understand it. Why? When it's on the books, you're letting them do it again. Every time he puts his hand out or he says, you make, you name streets after them that were streets before, named for in the city, you do whatever, and here we are again, the same old thing with the billboards. I'm telling you, it's just unbelievable. The only other thing I have to say is, I do want to thank you for having the homeless, the armories open for the homeless through the winter. It was a terrible winter and with the rains, and when you saw some of the people during the day, because it was closed during the day, the people that were out there, there were a lot of them, and a lot of them are seniors and in really pretty bad health and so forth. So it was great, they had a warm place to go at night and a warm meal. I understand it's being closed and I guess it's the way it is, that that was the agreement, but it sure makes you feel kind of bad to think of where they're going to be sleeping at night with the weather, the way it is now, and we still have more rain coming. So, but thank you again for the effort.
Thank you. All right. Closed oral communications, next.
Is there any new business?
We have new business.
And I hope people are still watching the show at home or listen clearly to what this motion is for. Proved that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law firm of Miller and Van Eaton, PLLC, to serve as legal counsel in the representation of the interests of the city of Glendale in connection with the matter of City of Arlington, Texas versus the Federal Communications Commission, case number 10-60039, U.S. Courts of Appeal, Fifth Circuit. Retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap and an estimated budget for the handling of said matter. By entering into said retainer agreement with Miller and Van Eaton, PLLC, the city of Glendale will be joining forces with a coalition of other communities nationwide to appeal the Federal Communications Commission declaratory ruling number FCC 09-99, which declares new limitations on local zoning authorities as they affect cell tower siting and, if allowed to stand, could potentially have significant impacts on the quality of life for local residents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? I remember when we didn't have cell phones in this world.
So, yeah, I'm old enough to remember that, too.
When Portola came to...
No, no, it was a couple of years, a couple of years after.
We used drones to communicate.
But, you know, this is serious. We have to...
Yeah, of course.
Defend on this.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Any other new business?
We're adjourned.
We are adjourned.